Twalton City Council Meeting held again on Zoom. Tonight, we have quite a few items on our agenda, but I'd like to start off tonight. Council Brooks in our last meeting requested that we have a moment of silence. For those who we've lost due to COVID-19, if you were listening to work session before. In the meantime, Council Brooks had a relative loss to COVID-19. So I'd like to give her the floor to make some comments and start the moment of silence. Council Brooks.
Thank you, and thank you fellow counselors for agreeing to have a moment of solidarity for those who suffer. From my own personal experience, my stepfather contracting COVID was a surprise. And he died with COVID a few days after he was diagnosed very quickly. And had other coexisting health issues that I was very concerned about. And I realize our community that we have lost disproportionately older people and people of color. And other statistics that people understand. And it's a true loss to lose so many in a generation. So. I wanted to acknowledge the seriousness of the COVID-19 pandemic. And the interesting thing too is this may be the only moment of silence with groups of people that I have in memory. Of my stepfather. Because we're not able to do a memorial. So I just want to thank everybody for joining with me in this. And I'm glad that we're making this a tradition to do in the beginning of our meetings. As we move through this pandemic that's ravaged our, our country and our world. And that we take care with each other. As we see each other in the grocery store and in our daily lives. To treat each other kindly during a time when so many people are dealing with grief and suffering. In different ways. And with that, I'd like to start the meeting with a moment of silence. For those who have lost their lives to COVID-19 and those who are suffering. Thank you, counselors.
Thank you, Council Brooks. With that, just people might be seeing in the news depending where they get the news from. Earlier today, I was in a Zoom call with Governor Brown. Governor Brown called the Zoom meeting for the county commissioners and mayors of the counties that are on the pause list. For those who didn't know, Washington County and Clackamas County are now on the pause list. On Friday, Multnomah County was. So three counties are all now together on this pause list. And what that is, is we're seeing a tremendous increase in COVID cases nationally and in the state of Oregon. And at this rate, we will exceed our emergency room capacity and ICU capacity. So the governor is asking for those nine odd counties. To take a step back, starting on Veterans Day, the 11th this Wednesday for two weeks. We need to get the rate of COVID down. She's reminding folks that I want to remind folks to wear your mask, wash your hands frequently, stay six feet apart. And the big new one is avoid social gatherings at your home with folks who are not your immediate family. That is the biggest spreader of the disease right now. The governor mentioned that we know folks are tired of this. We want to move on. We want to see our family. We want to see our friends. We want to be social. But it's now ballooning because we can't do it outdoors like we used to be able to do. And meet on your patio or your deck. People are meeting indoors. So what this pause is, is that indoor visits to folks in long-term healthcare facilities are now not allowed. Restaurants and bars cannot exceed the capacity of 50 people. That's including their staff. Gyms, fitness centers, and museums are also limited to 50 folks. The governor specifically made an apology. We just had the ice rinks and bowling alleys just reopen. But they can't stay open, but subject to the 50 people. And she really wanted to drive the fact home that indoor gatherings should be delayed. You know, your family dinners, unless it's your immediate family, don't have people over. Because that's how we're spreading the disease right now. And her last ask was that businesses who can make it possible that allow remote work from home. She's trying to avoid having folks come to the workplace again because that's another spreader. So please listen to the governor and please listen to my request. And you're going to be hearing all over the media. Because the other alternative is we go into a full lockdown again. And none of us want that. The governor doesn't want it. She doesn't want it. None of us do. So let's work together and get this COVID rate down and do anything we're trying to do. Keep the masks on and all the COVID precautions you can take. And ideally, this two-week pause will just be two weeks. But as was mentioned by Council Brooks and Council Pratt, it may be longer, but hopefully not. I know a lot of folks looking forward to Thanksgiving, and I think this year's going to be a way different Thanksgiving than we're used to. It might be a lot smaller than it used to. But then you won't get in the political arguments with your uncle this year. You know, that's a good thing. We had a weird Thanksgiving. I'm sorry, we had a weird Halloween. But I think a lot of people figured it out and made it work. So please pay attention to this two-week pause. Again, it starts on Wednesday. Businesses have some time to react and plan. As was mentioned in work session by Council President Grimes, we are concerned about our businesses. And the impact that this is going to have. Hopefully, they can ride this out. And if not, we'll be talking about whatever kind of financial assistance we still have left at our next city council meeting. So with that, I'll move on to announcements. And our first announcement is Small Business Saturday proclamation. I believe Council Pratt will be doing the proclamation, but our famous CEO from the 12th and Chamber of Commerce is here, Lynda Mulholland. You have something to say about the proclamation?
Good evening, Mayor, city counselors. Thank you very much for the moment to talk about the proclamation. And first of all, I want to say my sincere thoughts and, and just condolences go out to Councilor Brooks. This is such a strange and unprecedented time. Now more than ever, we do need to follow the governor's orders. But the frightening part is how many businesses it's going to affect. We saw what happened when we headed into the last lockdown. So I'm just hopeful that we can all work together right now and do exactly what we need to do so we can avoid a lockdown. So this proclamation is even more important this year because your opportunity to shop locally, online, or to order takeout or delivery would be a huge bonus for these small businesses. And additionally, gift certificates are a wonderful way to help support them through this time. And so that, you know, they can survive if we had to go into a lockdown or even just the pause itself. So thank you for taking the time tonight to listen to this proclamation. And as always, we hope you will shop in Twalton and in our local communities surrounding us. Support those businesses and we look forward to 2021. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lynda. And with that, Council Pratt.
declaring November 28th, 2020, Small Business Saturday in the city of Twalton. Whereas the city of Twalton, Oregon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there were 31.7 million small businesses in the United States representing 99.9% of all firms with paid employees. Who are responsible for 65.1% of new net jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 62% of US small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of US small business owners said it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And three-quarters of US consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agreed that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports our commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And 97% of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas the city of Twalton also recognizes the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, has had to honor small businesses and those they employ and has dedicated 1.2 million to our local recovery efforts. And whereas consumers have continued to support locally-owned businesses during lockdowns, with 86% of Americans spending almost $100 a week at local businesses, a 16% increase before the crisis. And whereas Twalton, Oregon strongly supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, public and private organizations across the country Saturday after Thanksgiving is Small Business Saturday. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Twalton does hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, a Small Business Saturday. And urges the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants in the Small Business Saturday and throughout the years. And this is adopted this 90th of November, 2020.
Right. Thank you, Valerie. For myself, being a small business owner, and many of our other city council members are associated with small businesses. I take it to heart and we try to buy local. So in these difficult times between the holiday season coming up, can't believe the ads already started. And Black Friday has already started. Make sure to help out local businesses, be they hardware stores, restaurants, grocery stores, anything here in Twalton. If you can help them out, as Lynda mentioned, biggest way you can help people out is with gift cards. And take those gift cards and give them out as holiday gifts. So please pay attention to our small businesses. We have quite a few here in town and I'm sure you'll be happily, you'll be very happy with their service. Some of the best restaurants in here in town are family-owned, so go and check them out. All right. So just for those folks who are in the Zoom land here and waiting. Just so you know, we're going to do some agenda maintenance and I'm going to move the annexation request ahead of the PTA. So those folks who are part of the annexation process hearing, be prepared, we'll be coming up to that first before the PTA. So with that, we're up to public comment. And this is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is on, not on tonight's agenda. Again, I'm going to repeat, that's an item that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there is anyone in the Zoom meeting, I'm aware of one folk, one person right now who would like to address the council. This would be an appropriate time. You don't have to be signed up. It always helps. And I'm aware that Jean has asked for some time. Jean.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. So my name is Jean Volnapaster, and I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed change to the zoning for the marijuana dispensaries. I've been a member of the Twalton community since 2003. I have four kids, two that have gone all the way through the Twalton schools and are now in college. I have one in middle school and one in elementary school. I've been a longtime volunteer at each of my children's schools as well as within the community. I'm here today as a very concerned parent and community member. Me and my husband do not support the proposed change to the marijuana regulation to 1,000 feet. Back in 2015, the city council voted to protect our youth. And it is my hope today that you will listen to the Planning Commission's recommendation to implement 2,000 feet and again protect our youth. Twalton is a family-friendly community, and I want it to stay that way. I have spoken to many of my neighbors and other local parents who all have the same concern as I do. This is a very dangerous time for our youth with all of the additional mental health issues as a direct result of COVID-19. These vulnerable youth are grasping at coping methods. I'm sure we can all agree that this is not a coping method we want for our city's youth. When they see marijuana dispensaries even closer to their schools, parks, and homes, the more dangerously normalized it becomes and the more comfortable they become with using. We need to continue to keep this community the safest place possible for our youth to grow up. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. What we're going to do, I'm going to ask Nicole to put that as part of the record on the hearing tonight because that is on the agenda. So citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda, but I want to make sure your comments are put in the right section of the meeting tonight. So Nicole will have your comments noted inside of the hearings tonight.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Any other public comments out there that? Because I can't, I've just seen a whole bunch of pictures of faces, so.
There doesn't seem to be any others, Mayor, and there's no one at the poll center either.
Right. All right, thank you. So with that, I'll move on to the consent agenda. The items that consent to gender are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda item consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the city council work session and regular meeting minutes of October 26, 2020. And item number two, consideration of resolution number 5526-20, adopting the city of Twalton investment policy. Would any council like an item pulled from consent?
Motion to approve consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion to second approve the consent agenda as read. I'll go through the photos here. Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council Kellogg.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. The consent agenda is passed. So as I mentioned, I'm switching the hearings around, so we'll now go to consideration of ordinance number 1442-20, requesting the annexation of approximately 25.18 acres, that's 25.18 acres, of property located south of Southwest Norwood Road, tax map 2S135D Lot 100, annexing the territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services and withdrawing the territory from Washington County, enhanced Sheriff Patrol District, file number ANN20-0003. But with that, I have a required comments I have to make per the Oregon Legislature, so bear with me here. So this is an expedited annexation to the city of Twalton. The state legislature requires the following information to be read. ORS 197-763-5 and 5 and ORS 197-796-3B. One, criteria for approval of a proposed annexation are in TDC 33.010. The territory to be annexed is within the metro urban growth boundary. The owners of the territory to be annexed have petitioned to be annexed. The application is consistent with the applicable provisions of ORS Chapter 222. The property is contiguous to the city or separated from it only by a public right-of-way or stream, ORS 222, where the annexation is consistent with directly applicable criteria for boundary changes in the Metro Code 3.09, that being an urban service provider agreement or annexation plan adopted under ORS 195.065, urban planning or other agreement other than those under ORS 195.065 between the affected entity and a necessary party, comprehensive plan and public facility plans, regional framework plan or functional plan, whether the proposed change will promote or not interfere with the timely, orderly, and economic provisions of public facilities and services, consistency with other applicable criteria for the boundary change in question under state and local law. Item two, testimony and evidence must be directed toward the above criteria or those criteria in the Development Code which you believe apply to this decision. Item three, if additional documents or evidence is provided in support of the application, any party should be entitled to a continuance of the hearing. Unless there is a continuance, before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, a participant may request before the hearing is closed that the record remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. Item five, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Item six, a hearing will begin with the city staff report followed by testimony in favor of the application, followed by opposition to the application. Rebuttal will then be permitted, then the hearing will be closed and the council will deliberate towards a decision. Item seven, if any council member wishes to announce any potential conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact, they should do not so now. Not seen raised hands up, so we're good. So with that, we'll go ahead and ask city staff to present their report.
Good evening. This is Tabitha Bocetti, Assistant Planner of the city of Twalton. And I am indeed here to present our staff reports. Let me get my presentation up here. So yes, good there. So we are talking about annexation of this property at Southwest Norwood Road. Here we go. And so to recap, we are talking about annexation at this particular hearing, and the scope is limited essentially to discussing bringing this subject property into city boundaries as well as Clean Water Services boundaries. So we're not talking about things like future development or other related issues in the scope of this particular consideration. Just a brief map of the location that we're talking about. We're kind of near Horizon School and Church, just south of Norwood Road and near I-5. As we've heard, this is about a 25-acre property, generally surrounded on the northwest and south side by current city boundaries. And so the property would in the future be designated with our medium-low-density residential zone as specified in NEBI Salt Creek Concept Plan. As we see here. And as detailed further in the staff report that is attached to your packet, staff do find that this application would meet the applicable criteria. And we are able to recommend approval and hopefully adoption of ordinance 1442-20, which would just adopt that with a single hearing. Let's see, so of course, council has options, so we could end up approving that tonight. There could be modifications potentially or future discussion. And of course, denial is the other possibility. So with that, staff is of course open to questions. May anticipate additional testimony as well. Otherwise, we'll keep that brief.
Right. Does anyone have any questions for staff at this point? All right, so now I'll go ahead on asking the applicant to make any comments or statements they would like to say in support of the application.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering here on behalf of Venture Properties, who is the applicant this evening. We appreciate you moving us up in the agenda. We also think staff did a good overview of the application. Annexation is a fairly straightforward application. The criteria is basically a willing property owner, immediate adjacency to city boundaries, and availability of urban services. This property meets all those criteria, and so we are here before you this evening asking for approval. And we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mimi at this point? All right. Bates, is there anyone you're aware of who would like to testify in opposition of the application?
No one has made note of it in the chat, and there's no one still at the poll center. If they wanted to raise their hand in the Zoom meeting now, they could do so.
Give them a moment to find that icon. Pretty quiet. So questions for either the applicant or staff from counselors? Wow, this is a rarity. All right. So with that, I guess I can go ahead, make sure Sean, I do this right. I can go ahead and close the hearing and move on to council deliberations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So the hearing is now closed. Council deliberations can now commence on this request for annexation. Questions, I mean, actually, I should say more. Yeah, I appear to questions, comments. Council Brooks.
Um, I just wanted to comment that I appreciate everyone that worked together to discuss this and staff for being very informative. And I also wanted to note that I appreciate that with environmental concerns for this property that there are, our city has stronger policies and regulations to protect trees and things in the county. So I just want to put that little note on there. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Pretty quiet. Any motions? Council Kellogg.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to go back and thank the applicant for working with the council and the Planning Commission and everyone else here in the city and staff to come up with a good zone change and something that benefits everyone. So with that, I will re, or move for a first reading by title only of ordinance 1442-20.
Second.
I have a motion as second for first reading by title only of ordinance number 1442-20. Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council Kellogg.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also, unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1442-20, an ordinance annexing territory at Southwest Norwood Road, tax map 2S135D Lot 100 into the city of Twalton, withdrawing the territory from the Washington County and Hand Sheriff Patrol District and annexing territory into the boundary of Clean Water Services.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion as second for second reading by title only of ordinance 1442-20. Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council Kellogg.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote I also unanimous, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number fourteen forty two dash twenty and ordinance annexing territory at Southwest Norwood Road, tax map two S one three five D. Lot one hundred into the city of Tuolton withdrawing the territory from the Washington County and Hand Sheriff Patrol District. And annexing territory into the boundary of clean water services.
All right.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance number fourteen forty two dash twenty.
Second.
I have a motion a second to adopt ordinance fourteen forty two dash twenty. Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Council Kellogg.
Hi.
Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
And I vote I also, the ordinance is adopted. All right, and the annexation is approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening. All right, so moving on. Back to my agenda here, flip back up. All right, so now we have another public hearing. And this is a public hearing, this is a legislative public hearing, consideration of plan text amendment PTA. Two zero dash zero 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 six. Amending Tuolton Development Code, Chapter eighty cannabis regulations. Here also I have a required reading. Uh, this is legislative land use hearing for the city of Tuolton. And the city councils have developed a plan text amendment PTA. Two zero dash zero 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 six, which be, which would amend Tuolton Development Code, Chapter eighty. Do modify the regulations relating to where cannabis facilities may operate in Tuolton. The criteria for granting the PTA are the applicable statewide planning goals. Division nine and twelve of the Oregon Administrative Rules. Tuolton Development Code, Section three three dot zero seven zero Plan Amendments. And the applicable goals and policies from the city of Tuolton Comprehensive Plan. The hearing tonight will can be conducted as follows. First, city staff will make a presentation. Next, the city council will hear from members of the public who wish to testify in favor of the proposal. Followed by those members of public who wish to testify against the proposal. And followed by anyone else who wishes to testify about the proposal at all. Upon conclusion of the public testimony, individual counselors may ask questions of city staff. And any person who provided testimony. After council questions, the council will close the public portion of the hearing and enter into deliberations. Upon conclusion of deliberate deliberations, the council will consider an appropriate motion and vote. Does any member of council wish to abstain from participating in this hearing? No hands drop, everyone's in, all right. So now the city council will begin the public hearing, we're a presentation from city staff. And I just want to remind folks when we get to public comment, the public comment is list is limited to three minutes each. And if you, um, agree with someone who came previously, please annotate your remarks that, uh, you agree with what was said before. And that if you have anything additional to say, um, please do so, but, um, in effort of trying to save time. You know, you want to save those three minutes for new items each time, uh, please do that. So let's go ahead and start with city staff's presentation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. See if I can share my screen and my presentation with everyone. Good evening, Mayor and council members, I am Erin Engman, the Associate Planner with the city. Before we begin tonight, I wanted to share that staff has received additional public testimony on the subject. Since the hearing packet was posted online. And you may find these comments in your inbox for review. Tonight, we will discuss amendments to cannabis regulations found in Chapter eighty of the Tuolton Development Code. We will begin with some history and then review the legislative amendments being proposed tonight. We also have Bill Beers here tonight, he's the Chair of the Planning Commission and he will share the commission's recommendation to council. So as background marijuana was legalized in the state of Oregon in twenty fourteen. And in twenty fifteen, the city adopted regulations that limited cannabis facilities to industrial zones. And imposed buffer restrictions that further limited the cannabis facilities to a small section of the city. And on this map here, we can see, um, the existing areas where cannabis facilities may be sighted. And it's a small triangle portion on the western industrial land. And then some history on this particular action. City council directed staff to hold a webinar to discuss these potential changes to cannabis regulations. With interested citizens and to answer their questions. Since this webinar, staff has posted answers to the public's questions regarding cannabis regulations on the city website. And staff has also gathered the public testimony which has been shared with you tonight. After the webinar results, council had a work session, um, staff was directed to proceed with the cannabis regulation. Amendment. And these amendments were presented to you Planning Commission on October fifteenth. The Planning Commission passed a recommendation of approval with changes to locational standards. And as mentioned earlier, Bill Peers will explain the planning commission recommendation to you a little later tonight. So a summary of our proposed text amendments, um, is included on this slide. The proposed amendments would allow retail cannabis businesses to locate in both industrial and commercial zones. Additionally, the distance required between cannabis businesses to residential zones, schools, parks. Libraries and each other would be reduced. And under these proposed amendments, the area where cannabis facilities would be allowed expands in the western industrial area shown on this map. And the amendments would also, um, allow new opportunities in the northern Antler or Bridgeport area of Tuolton. Staff has included some findings and analysis as exhibit one. Um, to discuss how the proposal meets the applicable approval criteria found in state, regional and local regulations. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bill to discuss the planning commission recommendation to city council.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors, um. So we met last month, the Planning Commission and had a good discussion on this and ultimately we didn't recommend, uh, plant text amendment zero 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 two six as written by staff. We reached a consensus, uh, basically. Opening it up, opening up the area on the west side of town. So a thousand foot buffer would allow for two areas in the town, it will the three, uh, three thousand foot buffer allows only one small area. Um, our proposal was, um, to keep one area but broaden that area. And then we also, uh, asked that we remove neighborhood commercial, um. Since I think by the way it's written, it would be removed anyway, but just get that language out of there. Some members of the, uh, commission had a few concerns. One was that nearly all of the written comments provided were negative. Uh, on, in many of the comments were anonymous, that was a concern of mine, it makes it harder to, to vet those comments and. Another question, a couple of the commissioners had was, um, is this reactionary? What are we, why are we being asked to look at this and change it? And kind of following on that is, is this change in the community's best interest? So Commissioner Appleton and I have been, were on the, uh, planning commission back in twenty fifteen when this first came up. I think it was twenty fifteen and I remember back to a survey that, um, the council at the time commissioned in October of twenty fourteen. This showed support for both medicinal and recreational dispensaries and wondered if perhaps it was time for. Commissioning another poll like that, if you really want to get the pulse of the city. And that's a summation of, of our discussion at the Tuolton Planning Commission.
Thank you, Bill. And, uh, with that, I tried to capture the planning commission recommendation within this map. The orange zone shows the area that they would like to prohibit having cannabis facilities in. And with that, I will conclude my presentation and open it up for questions.
Hi, this is Counselor Pratt and, um, Bill, I just wanted to thank you on the planning commission for all the work you've done, I've served on committees and. I really appreciate people that are willing to spend their free time as volunteers to, um, help better our city. Um, my one question for you is that, um. I'm trying to read here, there was something about it, um. The appearance in the recommendation from your committee and I just wondered if you could elaborate on that a little and. On the specifics of what was felt was inappropriate about the appearance as opposed to other businesses that are already established there in that area.
Which, uh, which area, Counselor?
Um, that where it's reduced in that retail area, um, towards Bridgeport Village.
Oh, um. The, the general thought on the, uh, the planning commission was that was one of the gateways into Tuolton and. Didn't necessarily have a marijuana business at the gateway to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Beers? Counselor Kellogg.
Yeah, uh, Bill, thanks, I just wanted to follow up on your last comment, so this exclusion zone. That's basically covering Bridgeport, the idea is that we don't want a sign that says marijuana on it on the way into Tuolton?
So maybe not in so many words, Counselor Kellogg, um, there were some, a few of us on the. Commission that were willing to approve the text amendment as written. And then there's a few that didn't want to allow it at all, uh, to keep the status quo. And so this was the compromise we had that, uh, we figured out a way to. Make the area larger to make it easier on businesses, but. Keep it away from the general downtown and residential parts of Tuolton.
Okay, was there any discussion about, uh, is it, is it advertising, I mean, that, that's driving people's. Decision on this and in a desire not to have advertising?
I, there's, I think there's, at least for a couple folks, there was, uh, the perception of having a. Like that's, that style of business or, you know, some kind of like a jiggles-esque thing right at the entrance of the town is not something they wanted.
Right, so and, and was there any discussion about the existing Oregon administrative rules that talk about, uh, the restrictions, uh, on advertising for marijuana facilities?
We didn't discuss that, Counselor.
Okay. Thank you.
So the, the purpose or the reason why they decided to. To not move forward with because of the, um. You say the interest of Tuolton will look. Will have a negative impact, is that what you're saying?
Uh, hi, Counselor, the, that was one of the concerns, um, but I wouldn't say it was the, the main driver. Uh, the main driver was to reach some kind of compromise among the Tuolton planning commissioners between. Keeping the status quo and then or adopting basically the state rules, uh, that are much, that are broader than our status quo rules.
So they had comments about, um, the state rules, but then on. When Counselor Kellogg said, if you guys talked about it, about the rules, you say there weren't many comments on that.
We didn't speak specifically about, uh, rules about signage.
So were there any other concerns, I mean, uh, besides? The appearance of entering, uh, Tuolton?
Yes, um, so a few of the, uh. Commissioners, myself included, um, uh, were concerned about the comments, like I mentioned before, most of them were negative. And also it was hard to figure out who they're, in many cases, who they're coming from and were they from Tuolton? And then there were some, uh, concerns about why are we looking at changing this now, is it in a reaction to? What is in a reaction to, if anything? And is this changing keeping with the community's interests, um, you know, similar to, uh. Like similar to the Salt Creek area, bringing that in and, um, going from, uh. Medium to city residential to single family homes, like, are we, is this change in the community's best interest?
Did they mention anything about, um, this strip joint that's already there in that area?
I'm not sure.
Well, you said appearance, I mean, and you're already, when you exit that area, it's already. I mean. I'm seeing like a cannabis location as opposed to, uh, a stripper, a strip joint doesn't seem like. That's much better than this is better, so it's always seemed like we're trying to protect our appearance, but then again, we have something there that's already. Looked on, looked upon negative, so I'm just. I just always thought that was, that was interesting to me. To when they started thinking about this. That, that's just in a comment that I had in a question like, okay, so they're okay to see something. That says stars, but then it's not okay to see something or at least think of something that says cannabis.
Yeah, that's a question for you, Bill.
So we, uh, the Stars facility wasn't mentioned in our discussions at all. And so I, I can't speak to what, uh, my fellow counselors were thinking of about that.
I'm wondering if people remembers what's around there, sometimes we forget what's in our exits and then we're, we're hearing this brand new thing. But then we forget what else is there in our community that already is. An established business. That's, that was my basically, I'm wondering and I'm curious to hear if they even thought that there were. There were other things there, if they're talking about appearance, then there are other things there that. Bring negative comments to, not negative, but in appearance that is seen negative to a lot of people's eyes.
So I, I, Counsel Reyes, maybe to further answer your question, uh, I think we were thinking about some of the stuff that was already in line. Like I know that I brought up that the fact that we already have a marijuana facility within three thousand feet of Hazelbrook. It's in King City and we can't do anything about it, so it is something we did think of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, and thank you, Bill, and the work of the planning commission, thank you very much. This is kind of a difficult needle to thread because we're talking about a legal, um. Business that can definitely, you know, establish itself here in the city and. Trying to balance the needs of a business or an industry in this category and then also figure out. How you balance that with community standards and what is in the community's best interest. And there's a couple of things that you said that I thought really resonated, um. You know, the, the amount of community input, um. Being greater than anything else that we have ever received for any project that we've worked on since I've been on council. That is a very compelling fact, um, I think a lot of times when we look at the location recommendations, especially up around Bridgeport. We tend to kind of focus on the east side of I five a lot where it's like, well, we already have stars and, you know. A variety of different types of businesses, but the proposed change that we've been talking about, it also includes the west side. Of I five and the actual Bridgeport Village, um, area itself where we have. You know, areas still to be developed over there, we have, um. you know, a lot of opportunities and those are really high profile locations. So I can definitely see how the commission had some concern about, you know, something locating on the west side. You know, again, I think we've sort of overlooked the fact that that got added in as a potential new area to site, which is very high visibility right next to the freeway may not be what you know, is in the community's ideas of what they would want for community standards. And I just, I appreciate the work that you did and I appreciate how difficult it is to make recommendations and something like this because it's a very polarizing discussion. But I do think also that it's very interesting that a lot of the commissioners were concerned about why we were having this discussion now and what prompted it. And was it something as momentous as, you know, bringing the Salt Creek area in and online or a major change for the city? And of course, that's not what's happening. It's a single, a single request from a single dispensary company that would like a different area to locate within the city. You know, I think that increasing in the industrial area is a great idea. I mean, we've got thriving businesses in there like Stikman and Industry that completely dispels the notion that you can't have some sort of a retail operation in the industrial area. I mean, they've been very successful, continue to be very successful and, you know, have great access for consumers. And I think I just, I really appreciate the Planning Commission's work and I really appreciate their thought about community standards and what is in the community's best interest. And I think in this case, we're going to be making a compromise and I just really appreciate the work and a lot of the comments that they made, brought to the table.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counsel Morrison?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Bill, for, the Planning Commission has got to be one of the toughest volunteer positions that we have in the city and you've been doing an outstanding job for a long, long time. And I certainly appreciate the effort that the Planning Commission went to define, to try to find a compromise to the, those who say no. And as far as public speaking, we have had, by my count, approximately 30 emails that are with names and addresses and they're all Twolton residents by my recollection. And we've had approximately 15 people speak before the council who identified themselves as Twolton residents. So we have a really good sense that there's a lot of people who are not happy with looking at this planned text amendment. That said, I think what the Planning Commission came up with was a compromise that I think a lot of us can can go along with for a variety of reasons. And I appreciate the effort that you people put into that to try to find a solution. I would look to the council to try to find a solution that gives us somewhat that gives us, well, that just gives us a a city that that is together coming up with a planned text amendment. I also want to point out to the council and also to the comments that have been made previously by Western Oregon Dispensary. The city of Sherwood just approved marijuana in industrial areas only. And they, when they put that together, I'm sure they were quite aware that being in the industrial area does not preclude you from picking up statewide funds. They also, and I said this in a, in a, in a comment I made, gosh, probably a year ago now. The industrial area is what's been defined as best practices, both by by multiple different public organizations that advise cities on on where and how to set up these places. And that was how this planned text amendment was originally set up under the consensus of best practices to allow use within the city of Twolton. And because it was something that the voters had approved, but also to keep it in an area that the the police department was in favor of and that a lot of the public felt was a was a compromise. And again, I said this in my public comment almost a year ago. It was an extremely close vote within the city of Twolton to allow marijuana here in the city. It was almost, it was almost a no vote. It wasn't. And so majority rules and we understand that and I understand that and I'm happy to work with anybody to try to figure out how to make it happen here in Twolton. But I am with a lot of people who just think that as an entry point to Twolton, it's a bad sign. And yes, Stars is a terrible, terrible sign as well. And to the extent that we can can get them to relocate, that would be awesome. They are though tucked around the corner. They're a little bit harder to see. This would be right on the corner, kind of a rising star on the hill, so to speak. And I just don't think that's something that's appropriate for the city of Twolton. But I do agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation and I appreciate the work that you did in and putting that together for us, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Beers? Counsel Brooks?
I just wanted to say thank you to you, Mr. Beers and the Planning Commission for considering this. And I understand that it's a polarizing issue that we see differently and I also do realize that there are things that the council takes into consideration that may be different. So I do want to acknowledge those things and I was just reading a Rick Steves article after the sweeping changes that we've seen across the United States this last election season. Because he's been part of the group and, and and he talks a lot about the economic impacts and I just, part of my concern, and I just want to be really frank and honest about this, is that we have a a city with a core full of bars. We have um, different types of businesses. We've, we've talked about the dancing place. I don't want to basically throw business, small business owners under the bus tonight because of my, I don't go to a lot of strip bars, but I don't want to, I don't want to have that kind of a conversation, frankly, in the middle of a pandemic where so many people are suffering right now. And I also do want to say that I've had private conversations in the beginning of of my tenure with people coming to me personally and discussing their medical needs and their desires around accessing places in residential areas. So while I know that not all of those conversations are happening at the public forum place and I do understand those concerns, I do want to say that I also noticed a lot of those votes and I know that that may be something that wasn't able to be discussed during your meetings due to the timing of the election. And just wanted to put that out there since that weighs into my decision making. Thank you again for all of your work.
You're welcome, Counselor. And it did make me think of something. Counselor Buck Huber, excuse me, Commissioner Buck Huber did mention that he wondered if there was a group of people who because marijuana is still a drug and there's some stigma about talking about it publicly, if there wasn't some private support going on that we just don't see.
Thank you. And I've had people reach out with private support. So I do want, I do want to thank you for acknowledging that.
Yeah, Mr. Beers, to that, there was, this is what makes it difficult because in Twolton Life, they proposed this question of what people thought and there were 54 comments and 76% of the people were more for it. So a small part of me wonders if people were just a little nervous to comment directly to the city about their feelings. So we've, if you look at these two together, we've got a pretty mixed, you know, as as your county, you know, planning commission, it was a pretty mixed result we got overall. If you look at everything out there for the city and our community members.
Any other questions for Mr. Beers? All right, Bill, hang on. Move on to public testimony at this point. So I'm assuming we have, this are our conversations here. I have more folks who want to testify against a proposal, so respecting their time, I'll allow the folks who want to voice their opinion against the proposal. We already had Jean do that earlier. Any other folks who would like to testify against the proposal here? If you raise your hands in the participant section or somehow show Bates that you want to have a three minutes to let us know what you think. I'm not seeing any right now. Are you seeing any Bates?
I'm not seeing any. Randy W.
Hi, my name is Julie Wellborn and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to say something. I guess I'm in the same boat with the previous woman, Jean. My son, he's 20. He went through the Tuolumne School District for most of his years. And just hearing his comments about so many kids that are smoke weed. So many kids, I mean, younger and younger ages. And I just think if we allow more and more of these businesses just to 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 broaden the area, that it's just going to increase the accessibility for kids. It legitimizes it more and more. And I mean, I just see that, you know, you drive wherever and it seems like these places are in every corner. So it's not about people not being able to get it. People can get it wherever they want because it's everywhere. And I think that if you give them an inch, they're just gonna take a mile and they're gonna be everywhere. And so I think I understand the point of this this new amendment, when what you have the past is just fine. So it's just about me, I think it's about the money and breed and what else. But I'm just, I'm not sugarcoated. I was totally against it and I'm sure a lot of who are against it.
All right, great. Anyone else who would like to testify in opposition to this proposal? All right.
I tried to raise my hand.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Hey, good evening all. This is Cindy Hillier and I have been authorized on behalf of the Twelton Together Board to show our support of the proposed 2,000-foot amendment that the Planning Commission has recommended. I would like to speak to the, to the other folks that have spoken. I would all, to Valerie or Counselor Pratt, excuse me, follow the Tuolumne Life comments and recognize that many of those people, I'm not sure, actually live in the city of Twolton. So I did want to point that out. Also, I wanted to address Counselor Kellogg's comment about the signage and make sure that the city councillors, as you're making your decisions for how our city looks and feels, that we see people can stand outside and twirl signs in front of Papa Murphy's. They can do it on the corner in front of the house glass. We see that all over. There's also a billboard within our city limits and and I know I've heard each of you speak before many times about looking, you know exactly what the city of Portland looks like. So you understand what billboards look like. So I do want to ensure you that that those things are available for advertising for anyone and everyone. And I would also like to address, because Counselor Brooks has so passionately discussed not only being trauma informed and taking and understanding the impact of the world we're in right now with COVID, but we do know that domestic violence and all sorts of coping mechanisms right now are on the rise and offering additional opportunities for coping with substances that alter a person's brain, whether they're of age or not, is potentially dangerous in our community and especially around the fact that the Measure 110 has passed to decriminalize cocaine and heroin and meth and a variety of other things. The environment that our youth and families are going to be raised in in this city is really important. And now is the time for you all to really pay attention and understand the time and the place of the decision you're making. And again, the Twelton Together Board would like to encourage you to accept the 2,000-foot amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Anyone else who would like to testify in opposition? Scroll up and down here and see if any hands raised. All right. Now switch over to those folks who like to testify in support of the proposal. Anyone in?
Hi, Mayor Vabeneck. This is Anthony Stewart here for Western Oregon Dispensary. How are you this evening?
Good. How are you?
Really well. Thank you all so much. Just wanted to express our thanks. Again, I'm here on behalf of Western Oregon Dispensary. We want to thank the council. Western Oregon very much appreciates this council's leadership and the process that you've all undertaken over these last months and years now, three and a half years to modernize Twolton's adult use cannabis business development regulations. I've spoken at length with each of you over the past three years or so, and I just wanted to mention just a couple of small points with respect to appearances. OLCC businesses, it was acknowledged, at least in passing, that they are all subject to the same aesthetic requirements, whether that be a site design review equivalent or or any other type of outward aesthetics as any other business in the city of Twolton. On top of that, there are stringently enforced rules with respect to how businesses advertise to the public, both specific to the cannabis industry as well as in the broader fair and appropriate trade practices that exist in the state. To the best of my knowledge, there has not been a single complaint of a businesses, a business in the cannabis industry that has advertised in a way that was either disingenuous or inappropriate, to the extent that it would, it would garner the type of criticism that we've heard tonight and that kind of change. Commercial zones are important here and I wanted to again bring the council's attention that you have the discretion to see that there are apples and there are oranges. There is one type of a license that is a retail license that is natural to be found in a commercial zone. The original planned text amendment that was put forward prior to the Planning Commission acknowledged this and allowed for a small bit of commercial expansion in the area that is was outside of the buffer zones for schools, parks and the prohibited residential zones. And I'd like the council to at least reconsider that element one last time before you make your change. And then lastly, one thing that hasn't really been discussed much is that this is also a job opportunity. We began this council and I would like to specifically say, send my condolences to Counselor Brooks and anybody who's dealing with COVID-19. It's businesses, it's families and it's employees. It's people who are seeking to take care of their families. In the adult use cannabis community, we are fortunate that almost all of these jobs pay at or above the median wage. And specifically, if you're setting aside the retail industry, a lot of people don't realize that the other licenses, whether it be wholesaling, processing, research certificates or laboratories, these are high paying, high quality STEM jobs and jobs that I think this community and the city can be proud of. So I think a little bit of a nuanced position here is helpful in understanding why after three and a half years, we are finally beginning the process to reasonably update and modernize Twolton's approach to adult use cannabis. Naturally, we'll be here for any questions and I, again, very much appreciate the work that you've all done. It's been thoughtful and deliberate and very much appreciated. Thank you all.
Anyone else who would like to speak in support of the proposal? All right. So that opens it up for council questions to staff or anyone who has vocalized opposition or support of the proposal. Any questions from the city councillors? Counsel Grimes?
Thank you. Well, I have a question to my other councillors. Is there anyone who would like to join me in a compromise? Who would like to join in a compromise? Um, is there anyone who would like to join me in a compromise? Um, who would like to join in a compromise?
That's in deliberations.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Q and A, not deliberations yet. And there are questions for staff or any of uh folks who supply public comments or Mr. Beers? Alright, so with that, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and open it up to deliberations. Back to Counselor Grimes.
Thank you. Sorry to step too soon.
No worries.
Um. Now, I would just like to ask the other councillors and the mayor if there's anyone who is open to looking at a compromise, who's open to looking at what the Planning Commission suggested, who's open to increasing the industrial area that we could allow for this use. Um, and for revising the areas around Bridgeport and removing that western portion of I five, sort of the gateway and the, right now, sort of our one of our Highline developments there at Bridgeport. Um, and looking to compromise and really taking into account community standards, community input, while still doubling, almost tripling, the area that would be available for uh marijuana facility to cite or cannabis facility to cite. I think that we've received really good input put from the planning commission as well as from the community. And I really feel like this is an opportunity for all of us to, you know, take a step forward and take the opportunity to really compromise and try to craft something here that's gonna satisfy the community needs and the community input, but then also allow greater opportunities for cannabis facility to cite here. And I'm wondering if there's anybody who wants to build a compromise with me.
Counselor Pratt.
Is it possible to bring up the map with the two thousand feet for just a moment? Because there's something I think I would like to point out on that.
So, um, the map I did show has the thousand-foot buffer. I can see if I might have one.
I thought you pulled up the two thousand, you did with the, what was proposed by the planning commission. I thought we had that.
Yeah, the planning.
So I think with um some of the conversation, I think there might be some confusion about the two thousand foot buffer. Within the staff report, we discussed them being a prohibited two thousand feet from I five, um, but not a universal buffer. So I just wanted to clarify that and um, am I sharing my screen now? I wasn't sure if that was working or.
That's okay. So they're saying a two thousand foot buffer all around I five?
That's what I understood. I don't know if Bill would like to offer some clarification or if if that was the understanding.
Yeah, and Counselor Pratt, that's correct. So the two thousand foot exclusion was around the I five area to basically eliminate that northern.
Okay, this is the map I was talking about. So my concern is there's a little piece up there north. There's a little tiny section in that light blue teal color. We're right next to where it says Interstate Five. And we're trying to figure out where there it is approximately, like a landmark close to that.
Sorry.
That's okay. So that little section there that looks like would be included, really tiny, in the top part of the teal, right next to where it says I five. What is, what would that be by? Or is there a landmark close to that so we could get an idea?
I realize I'm on the wrong map. Sorry about that. Here we go.
Okay, there.
I think it's, I think it's the industrial area along Boones, Boones, as it goes out of the city toward Durham. Counselor Pratt.
Okay, cuz.
And that area, that area is present both in the original draft as as the ordinance proposed by council included. And then because it's not really adjacent to Bridgeport, it it wasn't included in the planning commission's recommendation either.
Okay, so if I understand correctly from my question I asked um last time we discussed this, if we allowed um one facility where we're essentially talking on the, um, I guess it's on the east side of I five? Um, if we allowed one there, my understanding was we pretty much are eliminating any other, anything else going in there, um, especially on the, um, you know, it'd be on the east side. So that would pretty much eliminate everything on the west side of that area with the thousand-foot buffer. We allowed the one facility in there. Can anybody confirm that or?
That's what I recall that something.
Yeah, that's what I believe Aquila said. So.
Yeah.
Map that Aquila said if something located there, it pretty much precludes anything in the antler, if you will.
Right, okay. Because I mean, that seems to be the big area of concern, so um I don't think we're making a big change here by. I mean, if we have an interested business owner that wants to locate one place, I don't know why we're purposely eliminating it just to let, allow it somewhere very similarly close to everything would be my point.
I'll be able to see everybody again.
Mayor Paul Morrison, Counselor Morrison has a question.
Okay, go ahead, Paul. You might need the map.
I wasn't sure. Okay.
When you, when she, when she turned off the map, as I was clicking, no, I don't need the map. I'm fine. As as she clicked on the map, but adjusted my speed, I was no longer clicking on my microphone, so I apologize for that. Uh, no, I just wanted to comment on what Council President Grimes said, which is a very interesting point in light of the uh testimony from uh Oregon uh Dispensaries Representative. Um, this is not going to, if we approve that without the um amendment from the, I'm I'm calling it an amendment uh from the Planning Commission, then this business is going to replace a business, which also is employing people. But that business that it's going to replace is not eligible to relocate into the industrial area because it's not properly zoned for them to be over there. And so to Council President Grimes' uh comment in terms of, um, which hadn't thought about before, of of trying to uh develop business in an area that uh we need businesses, um, I thought that was an excellent point. And 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 I think it's something we as a council have have the ability to do. We're we're gonna, we're doing it in housing as we, and the state did in housing, as they changed the zoning requirement, tried to create something that isn't there. So um, I just, I wanted to acknowledge Council Grimes' comment that I I thought that was a very good and valid point.
Alright, does anyone need the map still up or can we, can Aaron take it away? If you could take it away, Aaron, real quick, but be ready to bring it back. Alright, other comments. Counselor, uh, Counsel President Grimes.
Thank you. Um, again, um, coming back to the idea of a compromise and a compromise that everyone can be comfortable with. I would, was wondering if there's any support for possibly keeping the northern Towleton antler, if you will, but amending it so that we're only looking at the east side of I five and that we're taking that western portion of I five, the Bridgeport area, off the table for a possible proposed citing or an amendment change? Is there anyone that would like to make that concession and that revision? To keep a small portion of the northern area available and open it up to development for a cannabis-type business, but on the east side of I five as opposed to the east and west side?
I'm just gonna check with Sean here on the Roberts Rules of Order here. Um, so if Counselor President Grimes wanted to ask that, wouldn't she make a motion for an amendment? How's the best way for her to do that?
So yes, that that would be an amendment to this uh planned text amendment. And so uh, i- if it did uh move forward, uh, then we would have to, uh, when the ordinance comes up, we'll have to uh table that so that we can make those those changes. But yes, the the proper motion at this point would be uh to amend the planned text amendment to account for whatever change she's suggesting.
Then she'd have to have a motion and a second and then a majority vote in favor of the requested change.
That's correct.
So back to you, Council President Grimes. So you have to like uh Jeopardy and our, you know, the passive Alex Trebek, uh, you're gonna have to put your requests in a form of a motion.
Alright, I'm happy to do that then. In um the spirit of cooperation and um all of us working together in the best interest of the community, I'd like to propose an amendment to the amendment where we would accept the recommendation uh by the Towleton Planning Commission to uh revise the proposed citing um opportunities for cannabis industry in Towleton. But the specific amendment that I would like to make would be to allow um a cannabis industry to be cited on the east side of I five up in um, I guess that would be gosh, north of the Towleton River, but not include the west side um of northern Towleton, the Bridgeport side of the city. If that makes my suggestion clear enough. It would open up an opportunity on the east side of I five and it would approximately, well, more than double the available um opportunities in industrial area of the city of Towleton. That is my amendment to the amendment.
Alright, Nancy, thank you. Do I have, do I have a second? I'm looking around. There's no second, so the motion dies. Alright, other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a I'll make a motion uh to approve Plan Text Amendment Twenty dash zero 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 six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the council to approve PTA Two Zero dash zero 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 six. Any discussions on the motions?
Yeah, I I quite point of clarification, what are, is that plan? Hang on, the uh Plan Text Amendment, as I read Twenty dash zero zero six, is that with the two thousand foot limitation on I five or without?
Without.
Thank you.
Alright, so people's faces have moved around. Counsel Morrison.
No.
Uh, Counselor Kellogg.
Hi.
Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
For all the public, that their input has not been listened to. For the Planning Commission, whose input was not listened to, I vote nay.
And I vote I also, so the PTA passes on a vote of five to two. Alright, so moving on to the next item on our agenda. That being.
You're, you may want, uh, just offer a suggestion. Um, and I know we have staff on both of them, but you may want to do a little bit more agenda management and move up the ordinance that deals with this, since you're already talking about it. It was item two under general business.
Alright, we'll do that. So since we're heading into general business, we'll just, we'll swap items uh numbers one and two. So we'll now consider ordinance number one, four, four, five, dash, two, zero, an ordinance relating to cannabis regulations, amending Towleton Development Code Chapter Eighty, and making minor amendments to other Towleton Development Code chapters. Do we have any staff report or presentation on this, Sherwin?
I believe, oh, Aaron, Steve, are you or?
I I can speak if.
Oh, Sean.
Oh, you're there too, Steve. Sorry, go ahead. Um, yeah, just briefly, I mean, this this ordinance number fourteen, forty-five dash twenty would implement the planned text amendment. Not only Chapter Eighty, but the the other minor amendments throughout the code are to change the word marijuana to the word cannabis. So that is gonna be throughout the rest of the code if this amendment passes. And I'll turn it over to Steve for any additions.
No, I'm I'm good. Thank you, Sean.
So questions of councillors for staff on this uh ordinance? Counsel Morrison.
Yeah, not really a question or a comment. I meant to um send a text message to uh Nicole. The, and this is, actually, technically, it's not related to this, except it is because as I'm scrolling up and down on our agenda, none of the links on the website match up to the item. So Nicole, late, uh, if this is something that gets posted this way, I mean, if you can correct those links because it's driving me nuts as I'm trying to follow along, it I, it's not taking me to the right place. And um, other than that, I have no, I have no comment.
I will say that Nicole and I worked on that this afternoon and or this morning. And so it is updated on the website now, but if you had downloaded it before, it, the the links were messed up. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no worry. I just wanted, just since I, I wanted to have something to talk about that I could talk about, so that's.
Thank you.
Other discussion on the ordinance? No questions? Counsel Brooks, looks like you went unmuted.
Um, I just want to thank um staff for the work on it. And the more I do my research around this, um, even though I'm quiet tonight, I really don't have my full strength energy that I'd like to have. I I do want to say that um there's a foundation that's that's racist in some of these laws and some of this language. And um, I appreciate um looking at this and I'm from a um, a more scientific nomenclature that I think that we're gonna move to as a society as we continue to move forward with this. Thank you.
Alright. Any questions, comments? Counsel Kellogg.
Yeah, there's a brief comment and I I mentioned this before and and I know that there are probably some hurt feelings out there tonight and people out in the community that think, you know, we're not doing the best thing for them. Um, so I want to take a second to explain my vote. Uh, and that reason is that I I don't, you know, hope that this law will now increase consumption in town. And I would bet that every other person who voted yes doesn't want that as an outcome. But instead, we are adhering to state law and allowing for the zoning of legitimate businesses. Now, some people may have fear that there are effects uh from reducing the the buffer. And if those come to be, then there's nothing that says that the law can't be changed again. So, you know, uh, like I said, I I just want to hope that, you know, the people out there in the community realize at least the reason why I'm voting for this is not to increase consumption. Okay, and with that, uh, I will move for first reading by title only of ordinance fourteen, forty-five dash twenty.
Alright. I have a motion and a second for reading by title only of ordinance number one, four, four, five, dash, twenty. Uh, starting with Counselor Kellogg.
Hi.
Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Uh, people shift.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. I I'm already uh looking at something else, multitasking. Uh, that's a no.
Can I clarify? Can I clarify? So i- if any councillor wants me to read the entire ordinance, uh, that that's what this motion. uh that that's what this motion is, and so that can be done at the request of one of the counselors.
I, no, I don't want you to read the, so clarify again for me, Sean, because I I had in my mind that I'm voting yes on this so that we're not reading it. But then I vote no on the second one, so that it has to come back again in two weeks. That's my intent.
Yeah, so so if that's the intent, then then if you unless you want the ordinance to be read, the first two motions will be uh motions to read the ordinance by title. And if you vote yes on those, that just means I just read the title of the ordinance, I don't read the whole thing. After the first two motions are made, then the third motion would be a motion to adopt. And if that is not unanimous, then we would bring it back on a on another meeting uh for third reading and then for final adoption.
So just point of reference, how long would it take you to read it?
Um, well, it depends on how slow or fast I read.
Yeah, there are hurt feelings, but they're not that hurt. Um no, I I've described them, yes.
All right, so I got two guesses. What did I miss?
Me.
Okay, Counsel Reyes.
I will vote yes for first reading by title only because I care about our city attorney, Mr. Brady.
I vote yes also. Sean.
Uh, thank you. Um ordinance number fourteen forty-five dash twenty, an ordinance relating to cannabis regulations, amending Twelton Development Code Chapter eighty and making minor amends to other Twelton Development Code chapters.
Mayor, I move for second reading by title only of ordinance fourteen forty-five dash twenty.
Second.
I have motion and a second for reading by title only of ordinance number one, four, four, five dash twenty. Counsel Kellogg.
Hi.
Counsel Pratt.
Hi.
Counsel Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Yes, I will vote for second reading by title only.
And I vote I also.
Thank you. Ordinance number fourteen forty-five dash twenty, an ordinance relating cannabis regulations, amending Twelton Development Code Chapter eighty and making minor amendments to other Twelton Development Code chapters.
All right.
Sorry, I've got a small invasion here. Mayor, I'm gonna move for uh adoption of ordinance fourteen forty-five dash twenty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance number one, four, four, five dash twenty. Counsel Kellogg.
Hi.
Counsel Pratt.
Hi.
Counsel Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel Morrison.
No.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
Well, once again, on behalf of a community, we didn't listen to a planning commission that we did not look at their compromise and take that into consideration. And the fact that it's incredibly naive to think that with all of this passing, if we don't like it, we can go back and change it because these businesses that fight under these changes that we made tonight will be grandfathered in, can't unring the bell that's been rung. I vote no.
I will vote I and uh addressing some of the points that were made. I feel that like as Counsel Morrison, uh Counselor um Kellogg said, this I am not for expanding use of marijuana in our miners. This is going to just open up some of our land over in the commercial industrial area for development of a store or two. I do not envision our city being overrun with pot shops, as people put it, like the city of Portland. Our distance buffers are pretty big, very specific where they can be. And we're going to make sure that these do not locate near where children congregate. I am very supportive of Twelton Together's mission and decreasing or eliminating ideally uh alcohol and drug use in our youth. And uh I know L L C C has made it very, very difficult for marijuana facilities to even um allow minors in, you can't get in. I've discussed this with uh as a minor, uh when you're as a of age, you can get in, obviously. I've discussed uh the the cannabis shops in King City and cannabis shops and Tiger with their respective mayors. And um they are not seeing the impacts that there are fears of. Not that it might not happen, but we're going to make sure it doesn't happen here in Twelton. Um I think we will keep our ears to the ground on this as to address any concerns that might pop up, like Counsel President Grimes said. Um I don't see us being overrun by shops. Uh if we even get one or two, that'd probably be the most. And um as was mentioned by, I think, Counsel Morrison, uh who are neighbors on the uh West were be opening shops here soon, Sherwood recently approved marijuana facilities, it took three votes, but it was approved. And I also want to remind folks that um back when Counsel Grimes and I were city counselors, the city did do a public outreach with a statistically valid phone survey, and the majority of folks were in favor of marijuana facilities, as was the vote held back uh years ago that a majority of Twelton residents were in favor of marijuana facilities in the city. So with that, I'll stop blabbering on. The vote is five to two, so uh tonight it will not be authorized tonight. It will come back on the agenda in two weeks. All right, thank you everyone for that. So moving on to our next item of general business.
Mayor, um I'm sorry, but I did write some comments because I didn't want to interrupt you while you were speaking. Can I still say them, or is that are we close and done? I just want to say to our community that we have heard the community that may not have come up to um speak, uh show their the way their profile or show who they are because they have already spoken through their vote, and I respect people's vote, and that is the reason why I decided to um that's what my heart was when I was making this decision, it was based on the votes that people um spoke and the right to vote. So that's the my uh main drive for saying yes to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reyes. All right. So now moving on to item number one, Consideration Resolution Number five, five, two, five dash twenty, authorizing the city manager to approve and sign the furnishings package for the Twelton City Services Project. Is that Clay?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, it's nice to see everybody, it's been a while since I've uh come before you. Um Megan's gonna help me out and share her screen with the PowerPoint. So I'm banned with issues. You still there, Megan? There we go. So it's been a while since I showed you this picture, and uh I was hoping to bring a picture today with uh brick on the side of it and uh showing that it's just starting to go on right now. And what we'll do is we'll talk about, um let's go to the next slide, Megan, we'll talk about timeline. Where we're at, what's going on, construction, we'll give a little bit of an update about that. And then today, we're going to ask you to approve a resolution to authorize the city manager to uh to purchase, help us purchase furnishings. And I'll walk through all of those things. First, I'd like to talk about timeline. So originally, when we started the project, um end of February was the target date for construction completion. And uh there we are about three weeks behind. Uh it'll probably be the middle of um middle to the end of April before we get finished. I'm just targeting April one should be, all the dots and all the I should be completed, and the project should be can be finished. The we're about three, three and a half weeks behind, we were about a week and a half behind uh in the time frame due to permits. Uh another issue, remember, we had a little issue for a week with smoke, that that delayed a week right there. And then the little brick that I was hoping to show you this week, um the brick came in, it was wrong color. So that delayed us another week. And uh we've got that now, they've started, they got slash Friday. They just started putting the brick up, just going there for the next next rendition, we'll bring that around and we can show you that. Um expecting completion to move in date by April one for sure. Um they're hoping they can make it some time, uh they're making good progress, we'll see how that works, but so far, it's uh we're digging into contingency a little bit, but so far, it's uh under budget, moving forward, looking good. And we're all breathing a sigh of relief in the last uh construction meeting, because I think we're that eighty percent mark, we've identified the major components that where we had some problems, and we think this will be more smooth sailing now from here on, which is some minor adjustments. Okay, we go to the next slide, Megan. So here, just wanted to bring forth just a few pictures, just for one, I just wanted to cry a few tears for the warehouse going away, that's been there a long time. Uh just to kind of read what it looked like at one point, and uh this construction pictures as we go forward. And uh there's a show with another slide next time, Megan. And you can see out starting, that's the the groundwork, the the concrete going in. You see that concrete uh picture on the left, and then on they see the snow, it looks like on the right, that's all geofon that goes in between the two layers of the construction. Um it's interesting, and then here's what it was looking like a few weeks ago. And uh you can see it's that kind of starting to come together. And then today, wanted to talk about the furnishings package, and after this, we'll show you a couple of the renditions of colors. Reminder what it brought back before too, as far as the conception. Uh what we did for the furnishings, we went out to looked at public contracts, we looked at a couple of them, and we selected the Harris Furnishings combination for it's uh most cost effective and and still a good product, um contract isn't yet finalized. But uh we're we're wrapping that up, in fact, we have the last meeting tomorrow to finalize the issue, uh I put it for a higher dollar amount. Um so that we have a threshold there as we move forward. It because I know that we're going to need some additional furnishings, there are always some other things that happen with that, part of that uh just in case, and part of the money we're uh asking for now also includes uh furnishings for uh the training room, the police department. And then also those twelve chairs that are in the uh city manager's conference room that they've been there for quite a while. I just uh the reasoning for combining those is there's quite a bit of savings in in the amount we're purchasing. And this makes sense to do that all at once, and then we can trade if we need to, we move down the road and just cleans everything up and and complete it. Part of that dollars also includes the the installation, uh there's two phases of installation for it uh for the furnishings. And uh we think we'll we've cut that nail down and and then our homework, where I think we're getting a pretty good bargain for what we're getting. And then we'll go on to the the next slide, Megan, and this is a sample of some of the finishes. And a lot of the chairs are a combination of similar colors, uh same with tabletops, those kind of things. And part of the in interior design packages, they're really popping, they come in, I've got some of that material in the uh older building side of the remodel, it's it's quite interesting walking and seeing some of that. Uh next slide, Megan. And I know this says traffic court now, that was conception, that's going to say municipal court. And the next slide shows the uh uh that's that multipurpose room, you see where there's a dividing wall in the middle, much like is out at the operations with the training room, the lecture room. So we can divide that room, it looks small, it's uh it feels adequate, um it's just a little bit square, what is smaller than the police building. Um but give you an idea of that, it should be light and bright. And with that, I wanted to open up for questions and discussions.
Questions for Clay?
So I guess just to clarify, I'm sorry, the um just to make it super clear, the the co- the furnishings contracts, the amount that Clay said is within the um the amount that it's within the total amount that we have allocated. Um Dawn's here, I believe, and um so and you'll remember that there are no, uh we didn't bark, we didn't go out to the taxpayers to raise taxes for this, we saved our pennies and then um are getting a small loan that that will be paid for by uh reducing our expenses associated with the Seneca Building, which we lease right now, which we will stop leasing early next year, so. Um Clay has done a fantastic job of managing this whole contract and staying within budget and um well, I believe it's eight million dollars, right? Is that the total amount we have? Yeah, so well, eight million dollars is certainly more than I have in my checking account. Um when you go to build a building, um it it gets constrained really quickly, and so Clay and the whole team have done just a fantastic job. But the furnishings is within that.
It is.
Counsel Morrison.
Yeah, I just a really quick comment, Clay, thanks so much for all the work you've done on this, it's just been coming along, I think, really nice. Um and I cannot wait to see the finished product, and I know staff is going to be excited to move in there, and I thank you for your leadership on this and and uh appreciate all the work that your entire crew has done, and please pass along my um my thanks to your entire staff, because I know it's not just you, you've got a lot of great people work working for you, and and thanks very much.
I will, I will say that uh I have to say that Roman Construction uh the superintendent and the project manager on that is probably one of the best I've ever worked with. There's been a number of problems, a number of challenges more than we can talk about here tonight, but uh it's really been a team effort uh with the Scott Urban Architecture, well, it's uh I can be pleased when you see it all and complete it. I'm I'm excited to turn the corner, I feel feel real good about it.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Pratt.
Oh, I just thought it was really um nice that it turned out that Harris Work Systems had a um good bid on this because they're a team or member, and although they're not technically in Twelton, they're in Tiger, and so I'll consider them a local business that we're supporting.
Yeah, they they put a lot of effort into this as well, they they've earned it.
Counsel Brooks.
I'm just curious if we envision when we can all be together again, thank you again for the work, uh when we can all be together again, if there are opportunities to utilize that space for maybe s- small community gatherings at free spaces, we were talking about um ways um when I was working with the LIP um committee, we were talking about ways to support especially um people of color, minorities of different sorts of having spaces where people in communities can gather that are easier to access, I'm just curious if there's ways after hours that that space could be utilized.
One of the design features of that is uh that multipurpose area. And I apologize, I wish I had a floor plan of of the building, I don't have that, I didn't put that in PowerPoint, probably should have. Um that is designed to access um so all of all the rest of buildings closed off to get access into the meeting rooms after hours. And so depending on what city meaning, uh city functions aren't happening, that could be a possibility down the road.
That's so exciting, thank you so much, thanks again.
Other questions or comments?
Kind of to that point, I'm sorry to interrupt again, that um we have a dearth of public meeting rooms, and you know that, and um so this does open up at least some additional ones, and then in the city offices side where development services, you know, building, planning, engineering will be moving over to this new building, um we will have um a couple of additional conference rooms that um that can be made available, so.
Comments? I just have one snarky comment, and Megan, can you go to the the slide deck again? And go to the first slide? Because Clay made a mention of someone else, but go to that first slide. That looks a lot like Jeff, the back of Jeff Fox. Left side, so somehow. Left side. So somehow Clay got Jeff Fox into this picture.
You know, the interesting thing you just said about that is when I first looked at that, I thought the same thing.
That's it. Yeah, I've been driving, uh, when I ride my motorcycle weekends, I always drive by operations to see how it's going. And there was the scaffolding going up to start putting the brickwork on, so the tieback. So I was happy to see the facade finally getting on there.
Yes, it's, uh, it's, uh, it closed in. They're putting storefronts in this week. Back to glass should be going in later this week. And it starts seeing it really come together in the next, this next month.
All right. Any other questions for Clay? All right, do I have a motion?
I motion that we adopt ordinance five five two five dash twenty.
That's a resolution.
Resolution, excuse me. Late.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution five five two five dash two zero. Counsel Kellogg.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel Pratt. Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
And I vote aye also. It's unanimous. Thank you, Clay.
All right, thank you. It's good to see you all. Take care.
You. Next item up is items removed from consent. We didn't have any. And we finally get the council communications, and I just want to kick things off by welcoming future Counsel Cindy Hillier. She's on the call here. She, I just surprised her. But thank you for attending tonight and.
Claiming a lame duck session, just so we're clear.
So I just want to welcome you and congratulate you on your election, and we look forward to you joining us next year. And I appreciate you attending tonight. Uh, other council communications. Counsel Morrison.
Yeah, real quick, I forgot to mention this. TTS, Tiger Twolton School District has a, um, now qualified, we received some childcare grants. And I was able to, when I found out about it last week, I was able to get this, Dr. Sue, the link to our website, which they graciously included in their email as a, that for Twolton residents, that there were additional funds available. That was an email blast that went out this morning to everybody within the Tiger Falls School District. So hopefully, we get a little more interest in our childcare program. And then also, I think you all received a save the date for November thirtieth. There's going to be a presentation on the SRO program to the Tiger Council, Twolton Council and the school board on that Monday.
Anyone else have any other communications? Counsel Brooks.
I just, we won't see, first of all, everyone, please be safe. And we won't see everybody till after Veterans Day. I just want to say, Mayor, thank you for your service, and thanks to all the veterans out there for their service. We appreciate the sacrifice, and I think people are really in touch right now, how much it means and for our country. Thank you.
I saw the signs that were going out across town, a hundred, a hundred or so signs, I think, went out. And then I saw Facebook today, the video today of thanking veterans. So thanks for everyone who put that together at the city. And yeah, it's a bummer. We're not going to have the breakfast on Wednesday, but got to keep people safe. Any other communications? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right. Good evening and have safe Veterans Day. And again, please comply with the governor's orders. We got to get these COVID rates down. Have a good evening.
Wear a mask, please. Good night, everybody.